Half a day and good morning. Welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. I'm Teresa Lai, the Chairperson of the Committee. Today's Tuesday, February 27, 2024. The time is 10:05 a.m. In compliance with open government law, notice for this public hearing was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Tuesday, February 20th and Friday, February 23rd, 2024. Notices were also sent to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets by email. The hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. We have one agenda item this morning. That is Bill Number 242-37COR. It's introduced by myself, Teresa M. Turlahi. It's an act to amend Sections 21101, 21102, 21104, 21107, and 2115, 21115, all of Chapter 21, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Sanitary Permit Requirements. I will briefly introduce the bill. This was introduced, this bill was introduced at the request of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the Division of Environmental Health. The bill will authorize the Department of Public Health and Social Services to prioritize sanitary permit inspections based on health assessment or risks posed to the public. By allowing the Division of Environmental Health to prioritize inspections based on health risks, this will ensure that the most pressing public health concerns are addressed first. This strategic approach, in addition to maximizing resources, will prevent the Division of Environmental Health from being stretched to thin. The bill allows the Director of Public Health to appoint a designee for inspection and issuance of notices of violation and establishes a time period for all demerits to be corrected. This will allow the Division the ability to be flexible by carrying out its enforcement capabilities more swiftly and effectively and also holds establishments accountable and provides them a very clear timeline for compliance or correcting all violations. The bill ensures that the ABC licenses or the alcoholic beverage licenses are enforced by the Department of Revenue and Taxation instead of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. By shifting their responsibilities to DRT, we lead to a more coherent and effective oversight of alcohol-related matters and will allow the Division of Environmental Health to focus more intently on safeguarding public health as mandated by law. The fiscal note on the bill says, "The bill is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact upon any fund of the Government of Guam." And with that, I'd like to invite testimony and thank you to the representatives from the Department of Public Health and Social Services who are here today. I'll recognize you, Francine, you may, or you let me know who, Francine, Francine Salas. Please introduce your team and you may proceed.
Half a day and good morning, Speaker Turlahi. My name is Francine Salas. I'm a Management Analyst for, with the Division of Environmental Health for the Department of Public Health and Social Services. And with me is Leilani Navarro, the Environmental Public Health Officer Supervisor, and Vaneer Raimondo are one of our Acting Environmental Public Health Officer Supervisors. I'm here today to read the testimony on behalf of Acting Director Peter John Camacho and answer any questions the body may have. Half a day, Madam Speaker Turlahi and members of the 37th Guam Legislature. My name is Peter John Camacho, Acting Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present testimony on Bill 242-37COR, an act to amend Sections 21101, 21102, 21104, 21107, and 21115, all of Chapter 21, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Sanitary Permit Requirements. The Department of Public Health and Social Services, known as DPHSS, Division of Environmental Health, DEH, serves and protects the people of Guam from environmental hazards and drug diversion through education and the implementation of governing laws designed to prevent injuries, diseases, disabilities, and deaths. The mandates of DEH are found in Division 2 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, which includes Chapter 21. Bill 242-37COR proposes to amend the referenced sections of Chapter 21 by updating these sections to bring the mandates forward by adopting current industry practices as well as general edits of Chapter 21 to create more clarity in mandates noted in the chapter. It has been several years since the laws governing DEH operations have been updated and there have been changes in the regulatory activities that need to be reflected in these statutes, creating more alignment with the law and practice. The Department recognizes the intent of Bill 242-37 and is in full support of this legislation. DPHSS would like to make a recommendation, though, to further update Section 21101 of Chapter 21, found on Page 2, Line 21 of the bill to read. This chapter shall not apply to the operation of any establishment, including any market wayside stand or roadside stand used exclusively for the sale of fresh unprocessed fruits, vegetables, and nuts, eggs which will be stricken, live poultry, live pigs, other animals except dogs and cats and other such animals as stipulated by the director, by the original producer thereof in his property, or liquor canned or bottled soft drinks. When this law exempting eggs was adopted nearly 40 years ago, intact raw shell eggs were deemed safe from contamination. However, it is now known and accepted by regulatory entities and the food industry that raw eggs are not safe. Salmonella bacteria can get on the shells of the eggs when laid and when eggs contact bird feces after laying. Salmonella can also enter the inside of eggs through micro pores of the shell or while the egg is forming inside the chicken before the egg makes its shell. As such, eggs are now considered potentially hazardous food by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, known as the FDA, and our own Guam Food Code. Salmonella is one of the top five foodborne pathogens worldwide, which, which sickens or kills many. Guam has had incidences of salmonella infection. And according to former, the former DPHSS Epidemiologist, Dr. Robert Haddock, "Small animals, including toads and lizards, which are commonly observed in and around all built establishments, are possible important sources of salmonella contamination in Guam's environment." It is unknown exactly who and how many businesses will be affected if the current exemption is removed. However, we do know that it, we do know that regular regulatory oversight can reduce the potential for salmonellosis, especially when you consider what we have observed in our local flea markets. The eggs offered for sale at these markets are known to be mixed from different sources or placed into reused egg cartons and offered for sale by third parties. In the event of an outbreak, a traceback investigation may identify the flea market that sold the egg, but may not be able to identify the flock of origin, preventing DPHSS from conducting an investigation. Furthermore, the storage conditions of eggs during transit and sale at flea markets have been known to exceed refrigeration temperatures that promote the growth of bacteria. The reuse of egg cartons may also lead to external shell contamination and increase the risk for illness. Once again, the Department fully supports Bill 242-37 with one recommendation we provided for eggs. The passage of Bill 242-37 will strengthen the statutes and afford the DEH with better enforcement options to further protect the people of Guam. We thank you for allowing us to provide our testimony and ask the members of the 37th Guam Legislature to take into consideration the Department's recommendations. Sizou Smasi, Peter John Camacho, MPH, Acting Director.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify? All right, then I have a couple of questions. One, of course, the testimony talks a lot about what's not included in the bill, and let's talk a little bit about what's actually in the bill, which is, by changing the inspection schedule or mandate to based on risk assessment or risk rating, do you feel like there, how will this impact the health of these establishments? Leilani, Leilani, could you state your position for the record again?
Okay. Half a day. My name is Leilani Navarro. I'm an Environmental Public Health Officer Supervisor with the Division of Environmental Health. So with, if the Bill 242-37 is passed, it will mandate the frequency of inspections based on actual health risks to the public, thus acknowledging that certain establishments pose a greater risk than others. This will allow our division to strategize our priorities and the allocation of resources more wisely. We are already implementing this risk-based inspection at this time out of necessity, and the passage of this bill will further strengthen our practice.
All right. How do you do it now? So how do you, what is, what have you decided is high risk?
Okay. So how do we prioritize inspections currently? First, we, we conduct inspections of health, of food establishments that are serving to the highly susceptible populations once every quarter. So this include the childcare centers, the hospital cafeterias, the food facilities preparing meals for the elderly. We also prioritize inspections based on funding obligations. So we have the DESERF Fund, which, DESERF is Sanctuary Inspection Revolving Fund, which allows us to conduct quarterly inspections of temporary workforce housing facilities or what we call the barracks. And we also have a federal grant which allows us to conduct inspections of childcare facilities every quarter also. And of course, we, we see the public as our eyes and ears. So whatever is reported to our social media pages or our office for reported violations, especially if the violations are critical, and especially if the report is a foodborne illness, so we prioritize those inspections as well. So it's just a reminder that staffing number impacts how quickly and how often we, we see things are conducted.
Okay. And what about the, changing the, the time allowed for correction of violations? So the bill makes a slight shift. I think they used to be able to get away with one demerit without correcting it. Is that correct, how I'm reading this? And it's changing now that even one demerit has to be fixed? Or how do you read these changes to the, to, it says, "When the demerit score of the establishment is 20 or less, all violations of," it used to say two to four demerits, it now says, "All violations of one to four demerits must be corrected within a period of time not to exceed 30 calendar days."
So previously, the mandate is only that our inspection demerits are two, four, and six. So we recognize that there may be some, you know, violations that should actually be one, one demerit point and three demerit points. So the one to four demerit points are considered non-critical violations. So this will actually be required to be corrected within 30 days of the violation. But for items that are critical, which are six demerit points, we still require that they be corrected within 10 days.
And the bill, even with the amendments, will continue to require sanitary permits and will require inspections, but it will be now at your discretion. Is that correct?
To, to a certain extent, discretion of the department is kind of a heavy word to say, or heavy phrase. It would be more based on the risk-based, you know, approach. So there are already current, current requirements in statutes such as Public Law 37-4, which requires the schools to be inspected on an annual basis, subject to the renewal of their sanitary permit, or the temporary workforce housing, which is, which is required in law for a quarterly inspection, and then our childcare facilities. So the, the, the big bulk of the type of HREs or health-regulated establishments that we inspect are in fact food establishments. And at the same token, with this risk-based approach, we can focus on, on a couple of things, right? But primarily, who, who these establishments serve to, or the kind of populations they serve to, and then of course, any other hot-button issues that we may see in the industry that tends to be plaguing either the establishments of our island or just in general.
Yeah, let me rephrase. Are you required to inspect every business every year?
Current statute says we are required to inspect no more, no less, sorry, no less than four times a year of every establishment that we regulate or permit.
All right. Four times a year.
Yes. And on average, we have 3,000 permitted establishments, so you're looking at 12,000 inspections a year.
All right. So this does not affect that mandate?
It, it does a little bit. So if we do a risk-based approach, we're, you're going to see a more quality point of inspection as opposed to every quarter, just an inspection for the sake of inspection.
Okay. So the bill actually is striking that language, right? The one that says, "As often as may be necessary and at least once every three months, the Director shall inspect." So we're striking that, so it gives you, the Director, the discretion based on health risk assessment, right?
So, Speaker, if I may add, so at a minimum, each health-regulated establishment should be inspected at least once a year, so that equates to about 3,000 inspections per year, because that's the amount of health-regulated, permitted establishments that we have. However, since the bill's intent is to inspect based on risk-based approach, where some will be inspected four times a year still, that figure may increase to additional 1,500 for total of about 4,500 inspections per year that the Division of Environmental Health will still be conducting yearly.
All right. Where is the requirement for the once, at least once a year?
I believe that language is not there, but the divisions, the Department's intent is still to conduct once a year for each health-regulated establishment, and then more frequently for those facilities that I just mentioned.
Sure. Okay. So it might actually increase. All right. Okay. One question then. It requires, "Before any person shall commence to open a business, that they have to get a sanitary permit based on plans, and then before they actually open that business for operation, they have to get a, an inspection, right? And to confirm that they built it according to the plans and they're going to operate it according to the plans." I, I've received calls that this takes a very long time for people. Is that the case? How would you describe that?
So, Vaneer is actually in charge of the Plans and Specifications or Permitting Section, so he would be able to answer that.
All right. Vaneer Raimondo?
Good morning, Madam Speaker. My name is Vaneer Raimondo, Acting Supervisor. Yes, so right now, we, we have one to two inspectors that inspect pre-operational inspections, and we increase our inspections every day now, from Monday to Friday. And if anyone are interested in, in after, after hour inspections, we take that into consideration as well, and also the weekends as well, to increase our inspections for pre-operational inspections.
So if I may add, our division aims to keep the waiting time for pre-operational inspections within two weeks of the, the time that they submitted a completed application and they tell us that they are ready for inspection. So we, we keep that timeline as much as possible. So we believe two weeks is a reasonable time for them to also make sure that their facility meets the requirements, the minimum standards.
Okay. So two, two weeks, they submit everything, they say they've built it up according to the plans, ready for inspection, and so you will get to them in about two weeks maximum. And what about if they give you the plans and they need that preliminary sanitary permit? How long does it take you to review the plans?
Once they submit the plans, we review it at the spot that they submit it.
Oh.
Yeah. So they go to the, what do you call, Business License and Permit Center. If someone, if you are a new establishment, they come in, we're open Tuesdays and Thursdays, they submit their plans, we review it there. If there's anything pending, we let them know to submit at a later time.
Okay, great. Do you have a backlog right now?
As of right now, we're within the, our minimum, the two weeks.
Okay, great. All right. And then, so now, I guess I'm going to ask you a couple of questions about the eggs, because so much of the testimony was regarding that. Have you ever inspected any egg facility?
So because there's a current exemption for egg producers from the sanitary permit requirements, we, we don't currently inspect egg producers. However, we inspect them if the eggs are already in retail food facilities or any type of food establishment. So we make sure that the requirements that FDA or our Guam Food Code requires for the eggs are being met.
You mean like in the grocery stores?
Yes, ma'am.
And so those, those are meeting the standards that, that they should meet, you're saying? However, and so what would, what would removing the exemption for eggs allow you to do in addition to that?
So this would, if we remove the eggs from the sanitary permit exemption, this would mean that our division will align with the FDA's current practice, which actually requires any egg farmers or egg producers to make sure that they have the necessary sanitary standards to, in regards to preventing contamination of eggs from the farm during transportation, making sure that they're properly refrigerated, and also during storage and sale at the flea market.
Okay. So is it correct that if they're sold in the grocery stores, you are a retail establishment, you, if, you have authority, you inspect those, and you, you have ensured they are meeting the mandates? If we remove this exemption for eggs, it means you would also do the same that you're doing for grocery stores at the flea markets and stands, other stands? All right. So currently, the exemption, we have an exemption for any market wayside stand or roadside stand used exclusively for the sale of fresh unprocessed fruits, vegetables, and nuts, eggs, live poultry, live pigs, other live animals except dogs and cats and, and other such animals stipulated by the director, by the original producer thereof in his own property, or liquor or corn, sorry, liquor or canned or bottled soft drinks. There's an exemption for those as well. Okay. All right. Well, I take, I will take your letter under advisement. My concern is that we just have a very beginning egg-growing industry here, and I do not want to squash that if they are able, the actual producers are able to sell these in stands right now. But I, I think, hopefully, the message is clear today that those are not necessarily inspected by public health, right? And, and there are risks associated with those eggs, that they might be contaminated. And however, there are eggs sold in retail establishments that, that are under the jurisdiction of public health right now. Okay. I appreciate that. Is there anything else you'd like to add in regards to the bill? Have you ever done any inspections regarding the ABC establishments? We're removing that now from your mandate?
Yes, we have not, because we know that it's actually the jurisdiction of the Department of Revenue and Taxation.
Okay. I'm glad we're cleaning that up, so we need to help you out as much as possible. Why don't you tell me about your staffing patterns now? So we had a period where we tried to get DOA to prioritize hiring of inspectors, especially for the Division of Environmental Health, and how is that going?
So currently, we have, we actually onboarded one new Environmental Public Health Officer One recently, and then with the passage, I think, of Public Law 3237, I think is what it was, or 3732, we were allowed to hire retirees. We had one, and he resigned a little bit, not too long ago. And so it's, it's, the vacancies are there. According to DOA, they are still certifying lists, they're getting eligibles, everything's sort of in process. Plus, there is a new, the FMIS system that DOA has contracted with, not only phased out the AS400 system, but also created this new HR platform for us to see and submit our requests for recruitment. So as far as we know, we haven't had any new interviews recently. We haven't received any certified lists for Environmental Public Health Officers or Inspectors, but we do, we do check in every single week with DOA, and we are also exploring other avenues, such as internships through UOG, which we actually currently have an intern now from UOG, and then further enhancing our recruitment and retention plan. It's just, everything takes time to work, Speaker, and so it's just a matter of putting the plan into effect and then seeing the, seeing if it's successful or not, if we're getting the kind of interest.
All right. So what would you say about over the last year, how many new have been, been able to recruit? Just the one?
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, I had a, I, I was hopeful last year, because we'd received a list of 11 potential candidates. Of the 11, four interviewed, of the four, one accepted the position. So, and again, I don't, the 22% increase has actually brought in quite a few interested applicants, so I think the pool has increased. However, I think to the, the process, we're reviewing applications that are a year old, and so it'd be kind of difficult for someone to wait a year to, to get a job. But I, I understand that DOA also has challenges with their HR staff. I think they're working very skeleton crew as well right now, so.
All right. Just a minute. You're saying people have applied over the year, but you don't get some of those applications for a year. It takes DOA that long to process them, to put them on a It takes DOA that long to process them, to put them on a list for your interview?
Well, I mean, I don't know what their internal process is, but when we view the applications, the stamp dates on them are almost a year or up to a year ago, yeah.
When you've been checking in weekly, do they give you a rolling list? Or do they wait for, like, they're going to wait for 10 people before they give you a list or something?
We have requested several times that, I know there's a rule of thumb that you get at least five candidates on, on a list, but we have requested, it doesn't matter if it's one, or if it's five, or if it's 15, we'll take whatever list you have. So we have asked weekly for updated status, and we haven't quite received anything yet.
So they're not, they have not, you're not sure that they've obliged your request to give you on an ongoing basis?
Well, internally amongst the inspectors, we, and as well as other staff, we try to openly recruit outside on our own, and so we, we are told that applications are, have been submitted, waiting, review, or rating from DOA on their end.
For an Inspector One, or entry level, what would the requirements be?
I can answer. So basically, they have to have a bachelor's degree and 32 semester credits in science and at least one college math. So that's the entry, and no work experience required.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, thank you again for your help on this bill and your recommendations to update our statutes that are long-awaited, updating, and for your testimony today, of course. Sidus Massey, thank you. So they're being known for their testimony. This hearing is adjourned. It's, it's 10:37 a.m. Sidus Massey.